I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, affirmation under our individual liberty and justice.
Thank everyone for coming this evening. Penny, why don't you call the roll?
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling.
Here.
Trustee Bowman.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman. Trustee Marisak.
Here.
And Trustee Betzinger.
Here.
Well, we do have a quorum this evening. Moving on to public participation, is there any public comment this evening? I don't see anybody in here. Is there anybody on Zoom? Other than John Etheridge? Hello, John. I don't see anybody else. So go ahead and move on from public comment. And move on to item B, which is recognition of Village Clerk Penny Fitzpatrick. So it's not like a surprise because it was actually on the agenda and the flowers. But we thought it was appropriate and I'm sure that everybody is aware at this point that Penny has submitted her letter of resignation. She's going to be leaving us after this meeting. It has been a tremendous time having her serve the village, your passion for the village, for nice food and all that kind of thing. And all the work that you do honestly is way above and beyond really what that is. So we just wanted to take a moment to recognize you, maybe take a picture if you're okay with it, and present you with this, and then say nice things and have cupcakes after the meeting.
It's a good thing somebody stopped me from grabbing one of those cupcakes before the meeting. I was headed that way.
I'll read this to you. So this is to Penny Fitzpatrick, Village Clerk from 2016 to 2021. A grateful appreciation for your service, friendship, and dedication to the Village Clerk. Like I said, stick around after the meeting. We can have some cupcakes. And that's another bunch of cupcakes. There. Thank you.
Thank you to everyone. It's been a privilege. Truly has. You're an amazing group of people to work with. I've been blessed.
And it's just goodbye for now. Thank you. Just a little bit of business. So the position will sit vacant until such time as this board appoints a replacement. During that time, Debbie Buchanan, our deputy clerk, will fulfill the role. All right. Let's get through this meeting so we can have cupcakes. Okay, the consent agenda. I'll read the items, entertain a motion. Actually, I would like to pull second item B, not to be confused with second item C, off of consent, proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and invite Trustee Spurling to read that for us.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Whereas since the awareness program began in 1985, mammography rates have more than doubled for women age 50 and older, and breast cancer deaths have declined. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month seeks to increase public knowledge about the importance of early detection and treatment of breast cancer. And whereas many women still do not utilize mammography at regular intervals, even though research indicates it is the best available method of detection. And whereas the National Cancer Institute estimates that in the United States, more than 230,000 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed this year, and over 40,000 people will die. And whereas taking advantage of early detection methods such as mammography and clinical breast exams could help the breast cancer death rate drop by approximately 30%. And whereas the American Cancer Society and other organizations continue to search endlessly for a cure through vital research and to reduce the risks of breast cancer through community education. Now therefore, Matthew T. Brawley, Village President of the Village of Montgomery, does hereby proclaim the month of October 2021 to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the Village of Montgomery, and urges all women and their families to get the facts about breast cancer, support those courageously fighting breast cancer, and honor the lives lost to this devastating disease. Once again, I'd like to thank President Brawley, staff, my fellow board members for the support on this. And with that, I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak. Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thank you. Thanks, Teresa. All right, the rest of the consent. Minutes of the Village Board meeting is September 23rd. Accounts payable through September 23rd. The refus report for August of 2021. And then ordinance 1927 granting a parking variance for Aldi. This is the second reading. Okay, minutes were on the 13th, as you guys all remember. So move.
Second.
Go ahead.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thank you. All right, items for separate action this evening. We have a word of a contract for bid package number 2.30, excavation, earthwork, site demo, site utilities, aggregate peers for the new Public Works facility to pre-performance construction and engineering LLC for the amount of $1,468 million. Director Wolf?
Thank you, President Brawley. So the village went out for bids on September 9th. Advertised for bids. Bids were accepted on September 21st at 11:00 a.m. and opened at 11:30. Total of four bidders completed bid packets that were returned to the village. After review of those bid packets, Performance Construction and Engineering LLC was the apparent low bidder. After reference checks, the village is, along with Camozzi Construction, making the recommendation to move forward with granting the contract to Performance Construction and Engineering LLC. A couple of interesting things that I wanted to point out here regarding this. So when you look at the financial impacts down at the bottom, I need to make one clarification. The budget line item of $1,391,765, there's a correction on that. It's actually $1,365,66. So essentially, in this bid packet, there's going to be funding that's going to be used from two different sources. One from the bond funds that were issued by the village board, and the other are going to be through the IRP. And the reason for that is because of the site reconfiguration after the denial from BNSF for the access point off of Ockit Road. We now have to have an access road from Nell coming to the south that'll meet the new facility. So we will be using IRP funds for that. So when we did the bidding, we based, we did two base bids, base bid A and base bid B. And the reason we did that was base bid B is specifically attributed to the road work. So that came in at $96,000. Now, another part of that that wasn't able to be separated was the amount of additional compensatory storage that's needed for the amount of road that we're putting in. So it was roughly about an additional acre of storage that's needed. And that estimate was provided to us by EEI of roughly $60,000. So basically, there's $156,000 out of this total amount that'll be deducted out, in which will lie us about $48,566,000 under the budgeted amount for this project. So with that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them at this time.
Would you repeat that last number? You said under budget by how much?
$48,566.
And that's total project?
That's total for this bid package.
Got it. Okay.
One other quick question for you, Mark.
Yes.
As you know, we always try to have local companies come in. Where is this group from, please?
They are local. I can't recall. It's Sandwich, Yorkville, Salmonok area. So local.
Thank you.
And have we worked with them previously?
We personally, I personally have not, but I know that they've done several projects for other municipalities. And again, their references were all good.
Awesome. All right. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
And Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thank you. All right, ordinance 1928 approving a redevelopment agreement by and between the Village of Montgomery, Illinois, and Orchard and Jericho LLC. This is waiver first passage on the second reading. Sonia?
Yes. As you recall, back this summer in July, we passed an inducement resolution for the development here at the southwest corner of Jericho and Orchard that includes the Gas and Wash. The ordinance before you formalizes and approves an agreement to develop the property for retail and hospitality uses in four phases. In total, the investment for this total project should be about $42 million, and the village will reimburse up to $1,64,875 in expenditures incurred in connection with this project that are eligible under the TIF Act. These expenses are outlined in the attached agreement in Exhibit B. As part of the redevelopment agreement, the developer is agreeing to complete Phase 1, which is the Gas and Wash, by December 31st, 2022, and obtain permits for Phase 2, which is a 10,000-square-foot retail strip center just to the south of the Gas and Wash site by December 31st, 2023. Phase 2 construction must begin before any TIF funds can be reimbursed for this development. The agreement authorizes up to the $1,64,875 of expenditures based on, out of the TIF funds, that's the Orchard Road TIF, based on the following rates. So for years 1 through 5, it would be 75% of the increment for this property. Years 6 to 9, 50%, and then years 10 on would be 25% of the increment. Obviously, it would not exceed that $1,64,000 number. We do have a couple of people from Bluestone here that are on the Zoom call. If you do have any questions for the developer specifically, otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
So this, these are coming out of the Orchard Road TIF? That doesn't exist yet?
No, TIF number 2.
Okay.
This is probably part of TIF number 2.
Okay, that's, okay, that's what I was thinking.
And so there's no sales tax component associated with this, right? Is it just TIF funds?
Just TIF funds. Yes.
Do we, and I, now I don't recall when I looked through this. Do we have a start date for all of this? Start date for construction?
They are hoping to get started on site work this fall, depending on permitting from KDOT and everything. So if they can, they'll get started this fall. If their approvals don't come in until too late to really get started with the earthwork movement and everything, it won't start until the spring. Okay, thank you.
And you probably saw they started trimming some of the trees down last week, too, which is really drastically going to change that corner.
It is a big change.
Took a bike ride down there and I didn't know, didn't recognize where I was at first. So I think it'll be hugely popular, honestly. It's just a great in and out, you know, location. So. All right. Any other questions for staff on this? I appreciate it.
Is there a motion to approve? So move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling. Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thanks, Sonia. Mike Troy, thank you. All right, item C this evening is Resolution 2021-014 authorizing an agreement between the Village of Montgomery, H&amp;K Property Dev LLC, and Belmeray of Montgomery Townhome Association regarding certain road improvements and maintenance. This was tabled from our September 13th board meeting.
Yes, at the last meeting, we brought this agreement before you. This is regarding the resurfacing of Helene Rider Drive over at the Belmeray Townhomes. At that meeting, you expressed some concerns that there was no clause in the agreement to address a situation where the developer failed to pay all the fees due before such time that we're out there redoing the roads. So the village attorney has revised the agreement. We've had Ryan Holmes take a look at it. Everything seems to be squared away. So you have the revised amendment before you that does state that either at such time when we're ready to do that, that they can either pay the balance, they have the option to pay the balance, and if they say that's not what they want to do, then we'll refund the money back to the homeowner association somewhere. So.
Perfect. Any other questions?
I actually have a couple of questions. So I did watch this discussion. First of all, do we anticipate that the development will be turned over to the HOA prior to, I believe it was 2025, we were seeing that this was scheduled for the road work?
At the rate we're going, I would imagine that it would be. But it will be turned over to the HOA once the development is completed.
Sure. And then. So. I, my concern is with the HOA because I know when it's brand new, they typically don't have a lot of money for the capital improvements. So this money is then earmarked. I mean, I don't, I don't know how we can, you know, have a hand in the HOA's money to say this is earmarked for this. So is there something in place where that money doesn't get put toward something else if something else came up? You know, not that I think they're going to go out and do something else.
We get the money if the permits are issued. So it's, the HOA wouldn't be holding a stack at the end, correct? But she's asking like-
If, if they haven't, couldn't decide not to complete, then we return the money to the HOA. Then her concern is that they'll spend it on something else, which they would have the right to do.
Oh, no, that part I don't care about. What I'm talking about is, so, okay, maybe I'm missing something. So the village is collecting the money from the developer.
At time of permit. So we are holding it in a fund.
So, okay, so we're holding it in a separate fund. And then even if it gets turned over to the HOA, we're still holding that money. Is that correct?
We're holding that money up until it's time to do the project.
So, okay.
If we don't have enough money to do the project at that time, we haven't collected enough, well, then the HOA slash developer can give us the difference.
Okay.
If they want us to do the road work. If not, then we'll return what we've collected to the HOA.
To use as they please.
Yes, and then they can use it as they please.
I just wanted to make sure I was understanding that whole process correctly. Okay, okay, I'm good. Thank you.
So do we have a backup SSA? Just in case if they decide not to do the road and the road becomes disrepair?
So the SSA process for private roads is a little bit different than a typical SSA. I don't believe, based on the statutory requirements, that this would necessarily qualify because you have to have a certain percentage of roadways within the village that are private. There has to be certain restrictions or, you know, impacts on emergency vehicles and whatnot. So I don't know that this, just this roadway alone would be sufficient to enact the SSA as a backup.
For the private road.
For the private road. Correct. Yes, there will be, or there is an SSA in that subdivision for all the other general, you know, typical subdivision improvements.
But this, the roadway was not included in that?
The language in the SSA is broad, but based under state statute of what can or cannot be included, it is not part of the separate, there was no separate process done for the private roadway.
And so if this were ever, so let's say the HOA chooses not to maintain their road up to our standards, what's our recourse?
Court.
Take the HOA to court and make them do it.
Property maintenance violation.
Yeah, it would be the same as any other similar issue within the village.
If a grocery store didn't have a, got it.
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, I have another question. So with the amount that we are collecting based on the building permit, we anticipate that's enough money then to cover the project?
Yes.
In full, as long as all goes well, and we don't have a huge price spike in something.
Right.
Correct. The estimate was, was provided to the village by EEI, who went out and did an evaluation based upon the current condition, and then again, using their own, you know, kind of expertise into seeing what they could foresee coming down the future as far as a lot of issues that could arise from current point till the work commences in 2025. So that's where that dollar amount was set.
And I do just want to mention, I know that Trustee Guyer had mentioned some of the private roads Lexington. I happen to live on Lexington. We have a portion of that road that is private. We also own, the HOA owns, two courts, which are not. They're not really wide to get a lot of emergency vehicles in there, which I'm not even sure how it was able to be built that way. But I can tell you that my HOA this year and last year has been doing that road work, and it is incredibly expensive. And our association fees are super high, and that's why I was questioning the whole process. Because if they are a new HOA, they typically wouldn't have a huge chunk of money to put toward a capital project. So that's why I had all my questions. I just wanted to be very transparent about why I was questioning that because I've seen it. Thank you.
The first, first go around with the road, we're collecting the money at the time of issuance. So they'll be good. And presumably, presumably, if they follow the same schedule we do every seven to 10 years to resurface a road, they'll have seven or 10 years to build that reserve up. And hopefully, they do that. That's, that's my only concern with this whole thing is that they don't do it. Then we have residents who are, you know, calling, complaining because their road isn't, you know, isn't being maintained. But yeah, I mean, this decision was made years ago to go this route. So we just have to deal with it the best we can going forward and hope that the HOA does the right thing by the residents.
Sure. Okay. Anything else?
Motion to, we're approving, right?
I do. Yeah, I do have one more question. This is for Director Wolf. Just, so looking at the aerial, there are a couple of townhomes that are currently on the roadway. So as our, I mean, as we come up into the winter season and this HOA is supposed to maintain and take care of this roadway on their own, as, as your trucks come through on Foster Drive plowing, in effect, as we all have that effect on our driveways with snow, it's just going to be the same effect on this roadway as well? That they're in a sense just going to kind of get plowed in on that road until their private contractor comes through to clear that road?
That's correct. And that's, that's been standard practice for, for, you know, my existence in the village for the last eight years, is that the village does not plow or maintain a Helene Rider Drive at all. So they do have a private contractor that comes in, clears the section of roadway. In, in most past years, we've noticed that they only clear the amount of roadway to get to the homes, which I know we did, the past director, Young, had issues with them not being able to get emergency vehicles through. So I do know one year, we did go out and assist just because we had high amounts of snow volume to get that punch through. So that way, we could get emergency vehicles through there. But that was, that was kind of a one-time, one-off occasion. So, yeah, that's been standard practice in the past.
And just so for, for my own educational purposes, what is the, the intent or the reasoning, the benefit for a developer to have a stretch of road like this labeled as a private road that's not part of the rest of the, the development?
At the time, it was because they did not have enough room to provide our standard 66-foot right-of-way. So as part of their PUD request, it was to be able to have that roadway as just a private drive and a 24-foot, a wide roadway there for serving those townhomes. And so that was approved as part of their, their subdivision request at that time.
Generally, if at all possible, I would never want to build a section of road like this. If I could have the city on it, that'd be perfect. So it was just a way to get it built.
Was that just to spur that development, get that growth? Or that development finished or completed?
So they could fit the townhomes in.
It was for the developer to be able to fit that density in there.
Yeah. All right.
Motion to approve?
There you go. Is there a second?
Okay.
There you go. Thank you. Thought maybe that was going to die. Go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger. Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Sonia.
Thank you.
All right, item D this evening is a PSA with EEI for design engineering for our 2022 infrastructure road program on the amount of $1,67,948. Mark?
Thank you, President Brawley. So at the last board meeting, Engineer Ott gave a update for the five-year plan. As part of that update, he covered the, the areas that are going to be focused on next year's IRP program. The village takes great pride in us getting out and getting advantageous pricing, so getting out early, typically in the February timeframe. So it's critical for us to come forward tonight in order to get this process started for the design for next year's project. Next year's project does encompass areas of Blackberry Crossing West, Orchard Prairie North, and then sections of the Police Department parking lot, or I'm sorry, not sections, but the entirety of the Police Department lot, Griffin Drive, Civic Center Drive, and then Ashland and Nell, which is west of, I'm sorry, off of Orchard, the section of Nell. So those are the areas that'll be affected in next year's paving program. There are additional items that are encompassed in this, crack ceiling, patching, asphalt rejuvenative, and other preventative maintenance items in this contract. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Second. Any discussion? Call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
That carries five zero. I didn't want to delay that process, but the, the one thing that he alluded to, Engineer Ott, when he was here, that I forgot to ask him about was, once we finish this next five years, we will have done the vast majority of roads resurfacing, right? The low-hanging fruit. And the next go-around, when we start getting into some roads needing to be rebuilt, it's like exponentially more expensive. So I'm saying this for the guy that's not here, but hopefully, he watches it, that when we talk about our rebating more funds, you know, from our sales tax every year, no, we, we need to keep in mind that we're going to be spending a bunch on our roads going forward as we start getting into like rebuild cycles. So just stay tuned on that, but keep that in the back of your mind. All right. That's DE, Resolution 2021-015 establishing a replacement tree. Tree. In lieu. Right. Nailed it.
Yes. So we passed our new unified development ordinance back this spring. As a part of it, the village board needs to enact a standard flat fee per tree for replacement trees. We're doing a fee in lieu, which is an option in our ordinance. The village arborist has taken it upon himself to review the price lists from various area nurseries to come up with an average, and then including installation price, is recommending a fee of $350 per tree. So the resolution before you would establish that fee. This is something that we can review in the future, moving forward, to make sure that it's an accurate price. And if prices go up a lot or come down a lot, we can adjust as needed as, as we see fit. And this fee in lieu is for us to use. So it is held in a separate fund, and it's for us to use to be able to do tree replacements or additional trees in right-of-ways and in public owned property in the area where the fee in lieu is, is taken for, for that development, if there's not area in, in a nearby area. So.
I do have some questions, just because I don't have the UDO in front of me. Is, so is a tree survey required first? And then, so like, remember, like 10 years ago, before the Sugar Dome and stuff went in, that whole eastern part of that site, and it probably still is, just massive amount of trees. Just the survey alone would be $10,000 or $15,000. And then we charge them a territory. So we have to do a tree survey, and then we would charge them $350 per tree, or they would choose to opt into-
If they're not being replaced, yeah, they would have to pay.
And it would go in a fund. All right. Sounds good. Anything else?
Our resident horticulturist couldn't be here, but he did have a question that he passed along to me.
Wow, I can tell you by that smirk on your face that you had something.
Yes. He was just curious when the arborist looked at and came up with the cost, was there a specific size tree that was contemplated here?
I'll have to, I will have to follow up on that. I'm not sure. I would imagine that it's our standard for parkway trees, the same standard that we use. So probably two and a half to three-inch caliber would be my guess, but, but let me clarify that and I can get back to you.
That's what he was curious, because he was hoping it was at least two and a half inch.
Thank you. Good job, Jeff. All right, any other questions from anybody that's here or any proxy questions? I'm just kidding.
Motion to approve.
Second. All of, or, yeah, call the roll.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Spurling.
Yes.
Trustee Bowman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Betzinger.
Yes.
That carries five zero. Thank you. All right, we don't have anything for discussion. Does anybody have anything under, new or unfinished?
I have one item for Public Works. So Director Wolf, if you would please extend a thank you to Public Works. The Rotary Club sponsored a river cleanup. It was actually, we sponsored a location of the cleanup that was a Friends of the Fox event. That was last week, and I meant to bring a picture to have it popped up there. They had quite a pile of stuff, and I know Public Works collected it and disposed of it properly. There was a lot of tires there. There was a lot of tires there that were in the river, so that's, it's kind of sad, but we did a good job cleaning up, so I just wanted to pass along a thank you for them taking care of that for us.
Thank you. I'll pass that along.
Thank you.
Is there a status update for the three-way stop at Lakewood Creek and Concord, as we discussed a couple of meetings ago?
Tentatively, there is. We just talked to the sign distributor yesterday, or, I'm sorry, today. They're hoping that the signs will come in, they're being shipped direct to us, so a little bit harder to track, but we're hoping that the signs will be delivered as early as tomorrow. Julie's will be cleared for Wednesday, so assuming everything goes okay, we'd be looking at Wednesday, probably mid-morning for installation, and then the appropriate work to go along with that, so.
Mark? Are you, are you done, Matt?
There was just one.
Okay.
I noticed that this, and I'm not sure if the speed trailer in front of Lakewood Creek School is Village PD. I, I just noticed it was flashing red yesterday the whole time.
You should have slowed down.
No, there was no, no. So it made me think that the battery was dying, or, you know, or, or it was, I was over the two-digit limit.
That could be.
I will check the video.
You're all good. I actually, I told my wife, that's, I, every time I've driven past her, it's never been red, and she goes, "Every time I drive past, it's red." I said, "I'll call the chief and let him know." But, yeah, I just noticed that it was, it was just, there was no number like it usually had, it was just flashing red, so I thought maybe the battery was, needed to be charged, or I don't know.
I did use it on Friday. I can confirm that I can run eight miles an hour. I ran it into the street for it, so. All right, anything else?
Just mentioned that the Halloween Safety Event is coming up on October tenth over at the PD. So please come out and enjoy. We're going to have a touch of trucks, some food trucks.
River Run, October second?
River Run is also October second, so we've got a lot of good things if you, you know, I'm more of a food truck kind of guy than the run guy, but, you know. So, yeah, the Halloween Safety Event's always a great time. The police department and our officers do a fantastic job of putting that together, so please come out, bring your kids, enjoy.
Thanks. All right, you can see future meetings there.